Time is 6:30 PM on Tuesday, November 17th. Would all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, our first item is the adoption of the agenda. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We have an agenda.
I would like to make a motion to approve Dr. Mark Meyer as the new superintendent for Montgomery County Public Schools effective January 4, 2016.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Of course, I would be the delay in this. Sorry. We're refreshing. Here we go. And who was our second?
Sarah.
Sarah, thank you. Again, I apologize for delay. Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Ivors?
Yes.
Ms. Corrin?
Yes.
Ms. Woolsey?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes. We now have a new superintendent. If you would, please welcome Dr. Mark Meyer and his family as they join us. Afterwards, we're going to take a short recess and for about 30 minutes to welcome Dr. Meyer and his family. So give us just one second. We're going to go get him. All right, here's Dr. Mark Meyer and his family. We're going to have a 30-minute recess, approximately 30-minute recess for a reception for him and his family to get everyone a chance to come up and shake Dr. Meyer's hand. So we are now in recess. And we were splitting hairs when it came down to it. Both of our other candidates, including Dr. Sears, were very, very competitive, and we want to honor them. Dr. Sears, thank you for submitting your name, and we want to very much express our gratitude toward you and your continued service at Christiansburg High School. With that said, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Kastner for awards, honors, awards, and recognitions.
I'd like to call up John Staten to assist with the honors and awards. Dr. Staten?
Good evening. Now we are ready to begin our honors, awards, and recognitions for this evening. Ms. Weaver, would you please come up and recognize the Seniors of the Month for the month of November?
Board members, thank you. A very special highlight of our board meeting each month is the recognition of our Seniors of the Month. Photos and leadership profiles, I hope you had a chance to look at them out in the lobby. Our presentation tonight will be with three seniors, and we do have one competing sports event from Eastern Montgomery High School, but tonight we have Auburn High School, Blacksburg High School, and Christiansburg High School. We'll begin with Mr. Polly from Auburn High School.
Thank you, Ms. Weaver, and Dr. Staten, Dr. Kastner, Mr. Lyons, and members of the board. It's my pleasure to introduce you to Tanner DeHart. He is our Senior of the Month at Auburn High School for the month of November. He is here this evening with his mom and dad, Sonya and Bowie DeHart, and his grandmother, whose name I don't know. So we'll just call her Grandma. And actually, he's here with his little brother, who didn't want to come up. So we just call everybody out. I know you have his profile in front of you, and it is extensive. Tanner is certainly a top student at Auburn High School, and there's a brief summary I'd like to read to you. It's a, just a combination of things that all of his teachers had to say about him. Tanner is bright, motivated, inquisitive, and always engaged in the most challenging tasks with great enthusiasm. His presence in the classroom challenges his peers to operate at his high level of critical analysis and application. Tanner sets high expectations for himself and finds joy in learning. He is also fully engaged in the life of our school, serving in student government, participating in multiple sports, and being a leader in a variety of clubs and honor societies. Perhaps more notable than his scholarship is Tanner's character and interpersonal skills. He conducts himself with exceptional confidence, maturity, and humility. He is unfailingly polite, respectful, and always kind to his peers. Obviously reflective of a fine upbringing, he makes a conscious choice to do the right thing in all situations. As you can see, we're very proud to have Tanner represent Auburn High School as November Senior of the Month.
Congratulations.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to present to you Blacksburg High School's November Senior of the Month, Ms. Georgia Bogarelli. She's accompanied this evening by Mom Lucy. Would you all please come forward? Georgia is an outstanding student, says Senor Apazo, her AP Spanish teacher. She can speak Italian, English, and Spanish. She is planning to continue with the study of the Spanish language beyond high school. She is dedicated, sensitive, supportive, respectful, creative, and one of the most hard-working individuals that Senor Apazo has ever worked with in his expansive career. Very deserving of this wonderful honor and recognition, Blacksburg High School is proud to present Georgia as our November Senior of the Month.
Good evening, Dr. Staten, members of the board. It is a great pleasure that I introduce to you Christiansburg High School's November Senior of the Month, Matthew William Fegler. He is accompanied here this evening by his father, Stephen, his mother, Lynn, and his sister, Rachel. Would you please come forward at this time? Matthew Fegler was selected as the Christiansburg High School Senior of the Month for November because of his incredible academic success and overall contributions to the school. Matthew is currently ranked in the top three of his class, has a cumulative GPA of 4.26, and is scored at the advanced level on all of his high school SOLs, including a perfect 600 in Algebra I, Biology, World History I, World History II, and Virginia U.S. History. He is honest, hard-working, and represents the school well in everything he does. We are extremely proud of him and happy to introduce him to you as our Senior of the Month, Matthew Fegler.
Before we take our break, Dr. Kastner will present the Virginia School Boards Association recognitions.
Each year, the Virginia School Boards Association annually recognizes board members and their commitment for becoming further educated, for boardsmanship, the skills, curriculum issues, through attendance at a number of their meetings and their academy programs. The board members can receive five levels of awards depending on their level involvement. Tonight, we will recognize four board members, but just it bears mentioning, for those people in the audience and two incoming board members, there's a lot of hours and commitment in the time it takes to be a board member. And for some of you that have done it more than a few years, it's truly a dedication. And our community is very fortunate that we have people that will step up. It sometimes seems like a thankless job, but for our community, I don't think there's too many jobs that have this level of importance. So tonight, we'd like to first recognize Jamie Bond and Sarah Woolsey, who received an award of recognition for their participation in professional development activities. If they could step down, please. And Jamie, who will be attending the VSBA conference, will get some more hours in, and she was not able to join us at this time. I would like to also recognize Penny Franklin, who has earned an award of achievement for her participation. Ms. Franklin, how many years have you been on the board?
Sixteen.
Sixteen and counting. Congratulations. Can you come forward, please? Finally, Gunnan Kernan earned an award of honor for her participation in the VSBA School Board Academy. Gunnan, would you come forward, please?
Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes our awards and recognitions for tonight. The board members will take about five minutes to recognize the, to recognize and congratulate the November's Seniors of the Month. Thank you very much.
At each of our regularly scheduled meetings, the Montgomery County Public School Board allows up to 30 minutes of time for members of the public, citizens of the county, to address this board on matters of education here in Montgomery County. Each speaker is given a maximum of three minutes to speak. You will notice that there are timers around the room. Once you have about 30 seconds, it will turn yellow. Once you have 10 seconds, it turns red, or at zero, it turns red. We have five people who have signed up to speak as of right now. I will call your name. When you come forward, please state your name and your address, and then your three minutes will begin. First on the list is John Seals.
So my name is John Seals. I reside at 201 Hartwood Crossing in Blacksburg, Virginia. You know, I'm sitting back there putting together my notes, and one of the things that really popped up in my mind is we're talking about symbols and the power of symbols, and the power that symbols have on our lives. And that's what I want you to think about as I go through this. So good evening to the board members. I really appreciate your time. I actually spoke the last time, a couple of weeks, a couple of sessions ago, and one of the things that I talked about is the fact that the courts have already ruled that you, as a board, can make the decision as to which symbols are allowed in the school and which symbols aren't. You have that power. You have that authority. So I don't want to argue that point and sort of read through that over and over and over again. But I do want to make a point that the board, that the appellate court made, and it basically said, "While acknowledging the importance of students expressing their views and opinions, the appellate panel emphasized that students' free speech rights are limited, are limited by the need of the school officials to provide order, protect the rights of other students, and promote the school's educational mission." It stated, "When as here student speech threatens to disrupt schools, school officials may prohibit and punish that speech, speech in the form of a symbol." And that's already been established, that speech can come in the form of a symbol. Now, I have two sons and a daughter that graduated from Montgomery County Schools. One of the things that I've always taught them is the golden rule. Treat others as you would like to have them treat you, not just in what you say, but how you act, and what symbols that you use. And yes, I teach my children, and taught my children, that because you can do it, doesn't make it right. It doesn't make it right. You have to think about your neighbors. You have to think about the golden rule. Treat others as you would like to be treated, with respect and consideration. To quote a school spokesperson, "Our job is to maintain a safe and orderly environment in the school and a peaceful environment in the school." Now, my wife and family are from Marion, Virginia. Her folks are from Saltville and Pocahontas, West Virginia. My grandparents are from Arkansas and South Carolina. Now, you can tell I am not from the South. I actually grew up in Chicago. And one of the things that I've realized, living in Chicago, is the power of symbols. Now, I don't know if you know much about Skokie, Illinois.
Your time is up, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is J. Robert Burgess.
Good evening. I'm Reverend J. Robert Burgess, 1713 Lyons Drive, Christiansburg, Virginia. I just, as, I just was thinking in terms of what we as Christians need to do, and one of the things that Paul teaches us in his letters is that if our actions offend a brother or sister, then we should not do it. Not that, he argues that we certainly have the freedom to do it, and the person who might even be offended, might even be considered a weaker member of the church, but he's making the point that if what we're doing offends, or hurts, or diminishes someone, that we need to honor that person's feelings. And even though we have the right to do it, or we are empowered to do it, we should still consider the other person's feelings and try to create a place where we can all feel safe, feel non-threatening, and a place where we can grow in our education experience. That's it.
Thank you. Next is Theresa Burgess. I'm sorry? Okay. Next on the list is Crystal Webb.
Good evening. My name's Crystal Webb. I live at 17 Lee High Court, Christiansburg, Virginia. And my brother, H.K. Egerton, is going to speak to you first, and I'll just sum it up real quick at the end.
Okay. We need to make sure that we state his name. If you're going to speak, then he needs to speak first, okay?
Okay. My name is H.K. Egerton. I hail from 71 Buffalo Street in Asheville, North Carolina. Two things, sir. Mr. Chair, and honorable members of this board, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak before you're here tonight. I have two concerns. One, the last reading of the ban of clothes. I want to remind the school board that United States Federal Law 425, Section 10, states that the Confederate soldier is an American veteran and is due any and all amenities of any other veteran, and that the Confederate flag is a venerated symbol mandated by the United States Congress. I saw your resolution, and I want to make sure that you keep that in mind. A Southerners whose ancestors were forced to surrender their armies and the independence of their states and country, not to mention many of their precious liberties, now called upon to surrender their very honor of their ancestors and their people's historic memory on the altar of appeasing ill-form, vindictive, special interest groups that want to force our children into believing that they are a product of singly evil people without claim to a just pride in their ancestors. Stripped of all the arguments made by that they tried to justify this deliberate cultural prejudice by allusions to sensitivity, preventing disruptions, or catering to one small group's feelings at the expense of everyone else's, it is still nothing more than ethnic cleansing and cultural genocide. Children are not stupid, and they will absorb the message being sent loud and clear. The past quarter century, working with 10- to 15-year-olds in the government schools, has made this bias against Southerners abundantly and painfully clear. I am the past president of NAACP in the city of Asheville. I was president when one man got up and said, "Oh, my God, we're the NAACP, the oldest civil rights organization in the country. We're getting ready to go broke. What are we going to do?" And one of those men stood up and said, "We got plenty of money, but we need for you to do something for us. We're tired of sending our children to schools down south like Ole Miss, listening to that band playing Dixie, and we're tired of sending our corporate workers down south looking at that rebel flag. Now, we as white men from the north can't attack that flag, but all you have to do is just go down south and say slavery, and those black folks don't know anything about that war themselves, they will get in line." I am certainly incensed about that because I know about the place of honor that folks who look like me earned under the Christian cross of St. Andrew that you call the Confederate flag. They made all the implements of war for General Lee's beleaguered army, stayed at home and protected those plantations the best they knew how, and many of them, though not supposed to be there legally, went off to beside a man that they not only called master, but a man they called family and friend. And to deny us, those black folks-
Your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you very much for having me.
And may I again leave something for you? Please give it to the clerk.
Good evening. I just wanted to say, I didn't start this. The school came to me on my personal property. I'm not in school. Redistricting is your authority and something you have legal power over. Yet, at a huge cost to taxpayers, you have not achieved, but instead you focus on a non-issue to your legality of the constitutional rights. The dress code in its original form with the Confederate flag was never questioned until you brought it to either people's personal property. Think very carefully about your decision. Constitutional rights are a legal issue, that I will not lay down or give up just not to offend somebody, because we are all equal because of the God-given American right. Due to said maladministration of the local government, I demand temporary resignations in order for Superintendent and Virginia Department of Education time to consult, because it's my regional historical flag. It is labeled as a hate group because of slavery. Then what about the Yankee flag? We went to talking about all things offensive by using my personal property, and we come to the labeling of just a Confederate flag and all hate groups. We as Christians are taught to resist tyranny, and the golden rule says we are all equal. And if you are born and raised here, you understand. Thank you all.
Thank you. Next on the list is Don Stoner.
Hello, my name's Don Stoner. I live at 2131 Christians, or excuse me, Vland Circle in Christiansburg. I wrote this letter. Is it okay to get the letters to you guys?
Yeah, just hand it to the clerk, please.
Okay. This is actually nothing more than the way I was treated at Christiansburg High School, or excuse me, on the phone, and a call I had made in reference to my daughter. We were at an academic function in Richmond. My son is in robotics. I called the school. My daughter told me, she said, "Well, it's an absence, you know, it's accepted as an absentee." Anyway, I read you the letter that I wrote that I never got a response from, from the school board. I'm writing you to resolve my concern regarding a telephone conversation with Dr. Kevin Sears, principal of Christiansburg High School. My daughter Jocelyn attended a robotics competition in Richmond Friday, March 20th, 2015, with me and her mother. Their son Zach participates in the competition. Zach told me, or excuse me, Jocelyn told me that absences are excused for school-sponsored activities. I called, spoke with guidance, they referred it to Dr. Sears. While in Richmond to confirm her absence, that it was indeed excused. Dr. Sears told me that her absence would not be excused because she had not turned in a permission slip and did not ride the bus to the event. I attach Section 7, Article 2 of Montgomery County Public School policy to, related to attendance and absentees and truancies. I apologize if I've overlooked the portion of the policy that says students must ride the bus. And the reason I say must ride the bus is three times he kept telling me, "Well, she didn't ride the bus." That was his main excuse of why she wasn't regarded as being absent. So the third time he was saying, "She didn't ride the bus," I did. I started saying, "So you're telling me that because she didn't ride the bus?" And I did talk over him, and he said, "If you'll let me finish talking," and that's when, that's actually when I said, "If you'll say something other than when she rides the bus." I took pictures of her with the, let's see, excuse me. I took pictures of her with the teacher. I took pictures of her with the class. I took pictures of her with the bus that he spoke so fondly of three times. His only excuse was, "Because she didn't ride the bus." I found his mannerism unprofessional, disrespectful, and even more condescending, and this is the leadership for my child. I do not do his job nor know his job, but in some aspects, apparently, I know the rules of his job better than he does, and that I find very unfortunate and even more discouraging. Just for the simple fact, it wasn't that big of a deal, but when I've gone into the offices before to try to get some help, my daughter, for her classes, I'm not even getting into, that's a different thing, but I would appreciate a response. I didn't get one last year. I don't expect it now, but if they write one, I'd appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, those are all the names that I have on the list. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the board? Seeing none, public address is closed.
I'd like to make one comment. The last gentleman indicated that he sent emails or letters to the board members. I never received that. Just to clarify things.
Okay. We will look into it.
Okay.
Next up is consent items. If no board member has anything to pull from consent, we will consider consent items approved. Anything, board members? Hearing none, they are approved. Next up is the personnel report. May I have a motion to approve the personnel report as presented?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Aye. Personnel report is approved. Next on the agenda is our payment of the bills. May I have a motion to approve the payment of the bills as presented?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We've paid the bills. Next on the agenda is financial summary report. May I have a motion to acknowledge the receipt of the financial summary report?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Financial summary report is approved. I will now turn it over to Dr. Kastner for superintendent's reports, recommendations, and announcements.
In a second, I'm going to ask Dr. Graham to step forward to go over the 2016 legislative priorities. Each year, the school board identifies priorities to be shared with the legislative delegation. The attached list represents the priorities identified by the board and the superintendent through some preliminary discussions. A list is provided for the board discussion and will be modified after the VSBA conference. At the joint meeting on November 30th, this will be a topic of discussion, as will what they're coming in from the county side. So Dr. Graham, if you'll come forward, please.
As Dr. Kastner mentioned, after the Virginia School Board Association meets, we will go back and revise these if needed, but for right now, the draft looks at supporting the work of the SOL Innovation Committee, which I think you will find that the Innovation Committee has been powerful in making some changes that have been very helpful to us, such as the- such as the expedited retakes. The second thing under assessment and accountability is that not only do we support the Innovation Committee's recommendation, but success at the school level be represented by both point and time achievement and individual student growth measures. So, we want to look at how students grow, not just at a single assessment measure. We also support established, varied pathways for students to earn credits toward graduation and/or CTE credentials, and we continue to support the reduction of the mandated standards of learning assessments to only those that are required by the Elementary and Secondary Education Act. Under budget and funding, we're suggesting that MCPS support full funding of all mandates. As you well know, many of our mandates are unfunded. We support positions directly related to the instruction in the classroom be funded as they were prior to the SOQ support position cap, and we support the need for added resources and expertise around professional development. Also wanted to mention that we support funding of all positions identified in the standards of accreditation by function rather than just by specific positions, so that we can group those positions, so that school systems have some leeway in what positions they particularly want to support. And finally, we support adding state funding to allow school divisions to adjust their career and technical programs as they see fit within the schools. So, that's just a brief overview of what we're looking at supporting, and then, once the School Board Association meets, VSAS will give us some other recommendations, and we'll finalize these. Any questions?
Comments, board members? Questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Graham.
The policy on the student dress code, we're in our second reading. At the October 20 meeting of the board, the board asked that a revised dress code policy be brought forward for discussion. During the first reading of the policy, the board requested some revisions. Those revisions are brought before you tonight for your approval. I would say, before you get in to this discussion, one additional part is, I too would like to welcome Dr. Meyer and his family. I will tell you, it has been a wonderful experience for me to get to know Montgomery County Public Schools, and I'll do everything I can to help your transition. And I will tell you, like, the appreciation that I have for the welcoming and also an appreciation of this community and the staff that I very much value. So, congratulations.
Okay, board members? Is there a motion?
Some move.
What's the motion?
What's the motion? Go ahead. Go ahead. Penny, can you go ahead and read the motion there? Recommended action?
To approve the revised dress code?
The motion would be to approve the revisions to policy seven point, or, seven dash three point one, student code of conduct as presented to be effective January 1, 2016.
To be effective when?
January 1, 2016.
I'm not sure where we're at.
Policy?
Right, I know where we're at.
There's a recommended action up at the top, agenda, item details?
Right. So, I move that we approve it.
You move that we approve the revisions, as I just stated?
Yes.
Okay. There's a, I have a motion?
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. We now want to discuss this. First, I want to talk about, let's, I want to steer the conversation a little bit as far as content is concerned. Is there anything? We have the newly revised policy in front of us, if you're able to pull it up. Is there any questions or any problems with the way it's worded? Let's see if we can get it up. Okay, we're going to try to get it up. Okay. Okay. There it is.
That does not have a date.
It does not, no. We're going to talk about that in a second. Any, any additions, any changes that any board member sees?
No.
Okay, the second question is implementation. It has been brought to my attention by several of the principals and APs that I've talked with, especially those where we do not have a policy currently restricting or banning the Confederate flag, that the timing to do this by the beginning of second semester is a little ambitious, especially if it is the will of this board for there to be a period of time for education about the issue and just the ability to change the policy and enforcement of that policy by then. I would, I would want us to consider possibly adjusting that date. Some suggestions, I think maybe a little too far out, would be the beginning of the next school year, but I think sometime in the middle of second semester would be something that we might want to consider.
I do agree that there needs to be some time to put that in place.
I, we've listened to many speakers and heard from stakeholders regarding the Confederate flag and symbols. Some have been very knowledgeable, and others have been much less knowledgeable. If we are to effectively ban the symbols, we need to be prepared, and in my opinion, we are not. We have final exams coming up, and we need to focus on that. Other than that, we also have the holidays coming up. There needs to be some preparation to allow all parents, students, teachers, administrators, and other stakeholders to become more knowledgeable about the ban and the policy we are working on. I've, I'm going to ask the board the same question I've asked you several times before. Do we want this right, or do we want it by Thursday? And right now, we're looking at Thursday. Shouldn't policies be implemented at possibly the start of the school year, but maybe at the third semester or the third marking period? Are schools prepared for this change? Are the teachers, are the administrators prepared for this? I think not.
Okay, well, I'm going to disagree. And, yeah, I want it Thursday, okay? I don't understand what's the big issue with this beginning, the beginning of the first semester, second semester. We tell folks, this is not permitted anymore. These types, just what we do with anything else. We send home the information, help folks understand that. If there's questions, they ask questions. I don't see that we need months and months and months to prepare folks for something as simple as a clothing, decals. It's not welcomed anymore. It's not permitted anymore. Why do we need to wait for months and months for that to happen? I'm not understanding this at all. I mean, I just don't understand this one.
And I, I feel like some education needed, but, you know, I definitely, we shouldn't be waiting till next school year. But what will the ideal time for this implementation to happen, if it is not January 1st or whenever the first day of school is, what will be the next reasonable time for change or the implementation?
What is the feedback from the administrators of what they envision doing to get ready for this, and what would be the drawbacks of doing it immediately?
The, the things that I've heard, and Dr. Kastner, you can correct me if I'm wrong, part of it was taking what Christiansburg High School did when they were educating their students after the events that took place early fall. Taking that, refining it maybe a little bit, but using that as kind of the base for the education piece that we would give all of our students. Did I have that correct?
Yes. Upon my arrival here, I kind of picked this up in process, in the progress, in the processes that was going on. In talking with Dr. Sears, anticipating the possibility that we would go system-wide, I asked him his thoughts, and he said, "The educational piece that they had after the fact was very productive, where different groups of students that had different viewpoints, when they had a discussion, both sides were enlightened." And he said, "If we were going to go system-wide," he said, "that piece, doing it on the front end, probably would be the right thing from an educational point of view." It's not relevant when he recommended, but he did recommend the educational piece. What we do know is the lesson plans that were developed, and I know Mrs. Blackburn was involved with that, I know staff was involved with that, are a good baseline that we would want to have. Dr. Sears perhaps worked with the high school people, but we also feel we need to have age-appropriate, age-appropriate activities at both the middle school and also the elementary school. And my thoughts and some input that I've received is that in the next three weeks, we have exams coming in, we also have a different time of year, and so, we can do what the will of the board suggests, but we could benefit from a little more time in January. The next breakpoint, at least a breakpoint, is the beginning of the fourth quarter, which is the beginning of March. If the board wanted to compromise on that, again, we can do what you want, but the education part, I don't think we can deliver it effectively. And Mrs. Franklin, from what I've heard, at the school, when they did have the piece of the different groups coming together, that time taken actually enlightened both sides, and I'm basing that on what at least was described to me at Christiansburg High School.
And I'm sure it did, but I don't understand why we have to wait to have, to tell folks, "It's not welcomed here," and then still do the educational piece. There has been months of news coverage, months of Facebook, months of everything around this issue in this county. So, I'm still not clear why we're, why we're waiting, why we're waiting to do this when we know that it's the right thing to do, and we can still do the educational piece at another time. Why we're doing this, I don't understand why we're waiting.
Questions?
I think that if, if we've, of all the policies that we've looked at and we've made, we've edited and made changes to, I think this is more than likely one of the most important policies we'll do in a long time. And again, I'm not going to disagree that I want it done, and I want it done as rapidly as possible, but I still go by my standards that we need to make sure that everything we do on this is done correct, and, and that means it's got to be done right. That means that all stakeholders need to be, know what we're doing, they need to be aware of this, they need to be educated as to exactly what this policy means. All parents, all students, teachers, administrators, across the board. I want this done as rapidly as possible, but that's not by Thursday, because I want it done absolutely right.
So, I, I need to know what exactly it is that you feel needs to be done right that's going to take till the first of January.
I, I think Mr. Sears addressed that when he said that the cart was put before the horse. If he'd have had those classes before the incidents, it would have helped alleviate a lot of difficulties. I'm looking to alleviate all those difficulties.
And I don't think that's going to happen. That, that's not going to happen by having classes with folks. What needs to happen is, it needs to be put in place, it needs to be enforced as soon as possible, which would be the first of the year. Six, seven weeks to prepare folks to say, you know, "Don't wear these types of items, these types of decals on school property." I don't understand the big deal with that.
I don't think that's what he was saying Mr. Sears said either. I don't think it would have alleviated, I think it was helpful, and they both saw both sides, but I didn't picture that being said.
I think my thoughts are on it, the more time and more education that we give to it, hopefully will alleviate some of the issues that, you know, in some way, shape, or form are probably bound to come. And I, I do think that this board is about education. I do think that we need to take every opportunity that we can to teach folks about it. You know, we're talking about implementing a blanket-wide policy that we have in place at one school-
Three.
At, well, blanket policy, including the parking lot and everything, the way that we've enforced it with Christiansburg High School at nineteen other campuses. And I think that there is some validity to taking our time in it and making sure it's done correctly and right, and that there is some education prior to the actual changes.
I'm just going to say what I think, is this is just stalling, because folks are going to be uncomfortable with what they're going to have to deal with, with this change, and that's unfortunate.
I guess I, I, I'm trying to understand here, sitting and thinking, you know, policy effectiveness date can be treated separately with the education. I mean, they can all start at the same time. Why the policy effectiveness date has to be after we educate? I mean, policy effectiveness should be, if we decide that this is the policy, it should start right now, per se. I mean, we can still educate in the meantime. I mean, I don't know why it cannot be hand in hand. That's why-
At the same time or beforehand, we've got six to seven weeks that that can start happening.
Yes, my other question in all of this as well is just our, you know, the precedents that we've had in the past. Have we changed policy mid-year before on anything?
Not that I'm aware of. Usually, it's the beginning of the year.
I mean, not that this is not an important policy in that it can be, I think it's serious enough for it to be changed immediately. I'm not saying that, but, you know, this is, would set a precedent, I think, for the board.
I think we need to be careful with distractions, with, with most high schools, well, most schools, having finals, midterms coming up, and wow, I, I don't want that to fall back on us because of this, of any distractions. And that's just one more thing, that, that this is an educational system, and we need to make sure that these students get the best they possibly can out of the classes they're taking without further distractions. And I'm just looking at this as the possibility of the next eight weeks being a distraction.
What about those students and other employees who have been distracted, been upset for years, for decades, with this in our buildings? What about them?
Yep.
Just, y'all just hang on a little bit more, a little bit more, let's keep pushing it down the road. I'm not about pushing things down the road, I'm about getting it done.
Are there any other comments? The motion that's on the table is for us to approve the changes as stated, for them to be effective January 1, 2016. I have a motion and a second. Are we ready to roll call? All right, roll call, please.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
I'm sorry, hold on.
I'm sorry, can I ask a question?
Sure.
If we're not okay with the date, then does it come back up for vote? Okay. I just wanted to make sure I understood the process.
Okay. Roll call.
I'm just going to start at the beginning again. Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
No.
Mr. Ivers?
No.
Ms. Coran?
No.
Ms. Woolsey?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
No, I think it's too early.
The motion fails.
Okay, it has not passed. Are there any further motions that need to be made?
Are we going to make the motion to approve the policy with a suggested date?
That's up to the board, I am not allowed to make a motion.
I will, I will need guidance from the administration in terms of what will be the suggested date that we think we will be ready, because I would like the policy being placed.
So your motion is for administration to let us know what their possible start date could be?
I was hoping that date is right now.
Okay.
I think March 10th marks the end and the beginning of third, the third quarter into the fourth quarter, if I remember correctly. So that's a possible date.
Oh, wait a minute, wait, there's a motion on the floor.
No, sir.
She's just been asking questions.
I'm waiting for the date.
Oh, okay.
Well, this policy is underneath superintendent recommendations, I have to say. So usually that means that they've been recommended through the staff.
All right, go ahead, Dr. Castor.
The beginning of the fourth quarter was just a division in time. While we have the concern, from what's been expressed to anybody's staff, because of the activities in December, I think, not to compromise, but just to say that we think we could deliver a good job, I think we could get it by the beginning of February, because we have an entire month. And if that sets a better message on the importance of the policy and the implementation, the other date that we talked about was just the natural break at, between the third and the fourth quarter. So that was arbitrary.
Which is when?
Between the third and the fourth quarter, which I believe, excuse me, was March 7th. But 30 days without the issues that come in December, I can see no reason why we couldn't effectively go through a very good educational process. And if that would give a, the type of message that we're trying to do on the importance of not assuming that we're trying to delay this, but we're just trying to implement it effectively, I would at least offer that for the board's consideration.
So you're offering March 7th, am I correct on that?
We said March 7th is a natural break between March 10th.
Okay.
Is the, thanks, is the break between the third and fourth quarter. But what I'm saying, a compromise to that, which I still think we could deliver an effective educational program, would be the beginning of February, in my opinion. I'm not basing this on what staff has said, I'm just basing it on a reasonable time, because as you start a semester, we could deliver it.
And I'll make a motion to approve the revisions to policy seven dash three point one, student code of conduct, as presented to be effective February 1, 2016.
Okay.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'm still not clear on exactly what we mean by having an effective transition. You say, "We've changed our policy, this is what it is." I'm not clear on what exactly else we need to do for, how many months now? Three more months? To have folks, you're going to have the same issues you're going to have if you say, "Do it tomorrow," or if you say, "Do it three months from now." They're going to be the same issues. I do not understand this.
My hope is this is going to give the administrations a chance to make their announcement, talk to their teachers, staff, maybe having an assembly with the kids. This is the, this is the policy.
In three months.
My understanding is they won't be able to do that through the month of December due to the exams and holiday. I mean, effective month of December is not whole month, we know that. And the January will be the preparations of February, so we are just giving them four extra weeks, instead of saying January 1st, we give them only four extra weeks to get together.
When we have issues in this district that we need to communicate with our students and with our parents, we can do it on a turn of a hat. We have those things in place. And now we're saying it's going to take us four months? Four months to communicate this very, it's a very simple policy, very simple. It's just because it's going to make folks uncomfortable. Well, folks are already uncomfortable and have been uncomfortable. I can't say that enough. And I was so proud of you all for coming this far to say, "We're going to do this." And quite frankly, you didn't bat an eye, because you knew it was the right thing to do. And now it's, well, let's just wait a while. Let's just wait a while, you know?
And I mean, I have seen assemblies scheduled just like that at a school for an announcement. That's a, I'm really, I have to support Ms. Franklin in this, when we move forward with this, it's, it's, schools, when they have emergencies or special events, they can make things happen.
I'll have the motion, so either it will fail or something.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Okay, roll call.
Ms. Franklin?
No.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Ivers?
Yes.
Ms. Coran?
Yes.
Ms. Woolsey?
No.
Mr. Lyons?
I have been thinking about this issue for a long time, and it's extremely tough. I do see both sides, and I think the courts, even in their decisions that they've rendered, have noticed that it is a difficult decision to make. On one hand, you're protecting students, you're protecting folks who feel slighted, who feel, as the Reverend pointed out, and I've also pointed out in meetings past, causing a brother to stumble. The other side of it, obviously, is, you know, the issue of free speech. And this is not a decision that I take lightly. It's not a decision that I have, I have spent hours, hours and hours contemplating what this is going to be. And since it is coming down to me kind of making a decision right now for this, I will take the responsibility to make this policy and to take it and make it effective and help our students understand and educate our students on what we can do with our freedoms. So my vote is yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Policy of the, policy three dash three, one point one, student dress code has been approved. Moving on to unfinished business, any board member have any unfinished business that they would like to bring to the table? Hearing none? We'll move on to new business. Is there any new business any board member would like to bring? Hearing none? Any announcements or information? You guys are extremely quiet tonight. Upcoming school board meetings, you see those coming up, those of us who will be traveling to the annual convention starting tomorrow, safe travels. And then we have our joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors, and if I remember correctly, some of our other legislators are going to be joining us for that meeting on the 30th. So with that said, this meeting is adjourned.